We're gonna have, yes, turn that air conditioner heater off.
Yeah, she said she would.
Yes, thank you, just because we record the meetings and with the video in the way that you can't hear what's being said as well. Thank you. Here's agenda if you want. And if you don't want to sign in then, there's a sign in sheet and there's an agenda.
Alright Cindy, are we rolling?
Yeah.
Okay, since it's the hour of nine o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order with, have a little call.
Bobbit, she's-
She is absent interviewing at Stillwater for the OSU LTAP. Administrator, is that correct?
Yes, for the program, yes.
So she's absent.
Okay, Ron?
Here.
Hess?
Here.
We do have a call.
Yes, so let's bow our heads in prayer, please. Our dear heavenly father, we come to you today thanking you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask for your help, guidance, and advice as we go through our agenda. Help us to make the right decisions for all of Grant County, for all of our employees, for all the, and all the people. We ask that you keep our employees safe as they go through the week. We ask that you help bring them home safely to their families. We ask that you help and guard the people passing through our county this week as they go to their, to their destinations safely. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Max, would you please, the flag salute, please?
Yeah, I will.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Meeting Act.
Alright. Item number five, consider an act on approval of minutes for October ninth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting, and that would have been last Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
I move to table the minutes for October the ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Ron moved, Hess seconded to table the minutes for the October ninth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting. All those in favor?
Bobbit absent, Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
All ayes, motion carry. Yeah, that way for the brain next week.
Sure.
Okay. Comments from the public on the below agenda items? And at this point in time, I would like to introduce Maggie Jackson as our new director for the Grant County Health Department.
Hi.
We'd like to turn the floor over to you to make some brief comments.
Sure. I'm just honored to be here in Grant County. I have had the opportunity to do some health projects here before and my history with the Health Department brought me up to this part of the state. And I love the community support we have here. We have a great group of folks that really care about serving our community's health. And I am starting my third week, so I have a lot to learn, but I'm really interested in, in putting the puzzle together of our county finances and want to make sure that the, we steward well the finances here and at the, the community. And this county is, is one of the healthiest counties in Oklahoma. So we, we're trying to expand some of our services. I'm excited to be learning that we're gonna be taking some of our immunizations out of the doors of our clinic. So that's been something we've been really kept from doing the last few years because of lots of challenges. But we're, we're working on some projects to bring health out. And we have a great nursing staff here and Melissa Tedford is our nurse and she's here every day. And we have great visiting staff too that are serving this community. So I wanna make sure that I'm as transparent as I can be and, and make sure that if there are any questions, any concerns, that I'm available. And I don't have a mobile phone yet, but I can be reached through, usually through the Garfield County Health Department or at Maggie J at health dot ok dot gov if you ever wanna email me. I'm on the road a lot.
Maggie J at what?
At health dot ok dot gov.
Alright.
Yeah, so it's great to meet you all. I'm just ready to be a good partner and steward well. We're gonna be doing some improvements to the building, some different things I may get your input on and we're excited to move forward.
Alright.
Excellent.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming over.
Yes.
And we're here for you, so whatever we can do to help, just, just ask.
Exactly, exactly, we're all in this together.
Yeah.
For better or worse.
Yeah, later.
Right.
Did you? Oh, okay, cool, good. So, well, you're welcome to stay or for the meeting if you like.
Yes, I'd like to kinda hear your opinion.
Alright, item seven, discuss and take possible action on the following agenda items. Item A, acknowledge final fifty percent movement of budgeted funds for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
I didn't really type anything up, I just, I have the documentation from Penny and then our transfer showing so-
Okay.
Between the treasury, I just thought it might, would be good to acknowledge in the many minutes that we have done the final fifty percent movement of the budget.
Okay, we don't have to do a resolution for that?
I didn't see one in there previously. I saw a final percent on the hundred, so I'll find out for sure.
I think we do, I think we usually do-
Do a resolution?
I think so.
Okay, okay, well, I, like I said, I looked through and I didn't see one, but, but you know, there's all, just a variance every year, so yeah. But I'd be glad to do that, so if you guys wanna table acknowledging and I'll do a resolution.
Well, we can, we can acknowledge what's here and that's-
And then, okay.
That's fine, and then we can have a resolution if you want to put that on next week's agenda.
I'm new as well.
And we'll find out what needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll do some checking. Things are kinda settling down hopefully now a little bit, so. I do wanna say, if I may, the budget has not been taken down yet and that is because, and I emailed Nancy Grantham and she says not in the budget levy, she was complete. Well, I had to wait to get, well, the Health Department got their budget through and so then I was waiting on, I had to get the publication on the school and they were gone at the newspaper office, but I got it Friday afternoon, so I'm planning to go this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted you to know, it's not in holdup on our cards, yeah.
Well, let's just make sure we note that in the minutes.
Okay, okay.
I would make a motion to acknowledge the fifty percent movement of the budget for FY eighteen, nineteen funds.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Hess moved, Ron seconded to acknowledge the final fifty percent movement of budgeted funds for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen. All those in favor?
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit absent.
All ayes, motion carry, transfers.
I do have transfers. I went back and did transfers on the repayment of, to, on the tort claims because prior to fifty percent movement, we, we pay our, we're self insured and we didn't have enough in our fifty percent to pay the full annual premium, but it's cheaper to pay the annual premium. So here's a copy of where we originally had transferred it. So one is SIG and one is SIF. And we had a portion of the premium, we had to take it out for contingency account. And then now we're paying back the contingency out of the account that it should have originally come.
Okay, so it looks like, and we may have to table this since we don't know if there's a resolution that needs to be signed.
Oh, fifty percent movement?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I can hold those till next week, they're just regular transfers, it's nothing urgent.
Yeah, cuz, cuz it's kind of the chicken and egg deal.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, no problem. Less work for me this week.
I, yeah, we don't need to get-
Hi, Robin.
Good morning.
Okay.
We don't need to get ourselves in trouble thinking we're doing it.
Yes, I'm glad you thought of that, yeah, okay, so we'll say no transfers.
Okay, so there's none, okay.
I make a motion to review purchase orders and travel claims.
I'll second that. Hess moved and Ron seconded to review purchase orders and travel claims. All those in favor?
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Bobbit absent.
Motion carried. Okay, all these are actual. These are all your district.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'm gonna try to speak to her.
Are you? Okay, I'll be looking.
My cousin's always had that, laid her little hand out. My sister's daughter did. I never even noticed, so I need to dig out baby pictures in comparison. Skin was pretty and-
Yeah, it was tough.
She was always tied up. They had to do the surgery. And then, the epidural hadn't taken long enough to do everything else, they had to do a splint. Get it, it went up, she couldn't breathe. So they had to put her completely under. So she was, and then he couldn't, he couldn't get her, she was stuck, he couldn't pull. The nurse go and push her, she was stuck. He said, he said he couldn't get it because she was still connected. They said, they said if they stand, just everything would stick.
I didn't even get a tire fixed for us in seventeen, eighteen dollars.
I know, in that time.
And I remember when we first opened the tire shop, and it was a bank of car. Where little these two is, my husband and I sparkled, which was, he passed away and we had sold the business.
Max got one fixed for ten bucks.
Yep.
You don't know what that is, cost you fifteen the last time.
Farmer's grade.
You know, I never had a flat tire once when we went to the tire shop and it wasn't, honestly, it wasn't six months after we sold that place, I had flat tires. I had like three cents.
Yeah, but I think you're gonna find out this is a mower tire.
Well, still, I'm a mower.
Usually the mower ones are harder to fix, aren't they? Cause they're little.
Yeah. Tough to get, bridle off the rim.
Okay, this is my-
Yep, yep.
Now here's the PO, but it's on the E card, yeah. In all the newspapers, we don't have anything for publications. Penny, do we have a fifty percent movement, we do a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz we don't have that, we weren't pretty sure, so I didn't see one on the fifty percent movement.
That's why when I brought the figures in here, they just all ended up signing it.
Oh, okay.
To acknowledge.
Okay.
But then it needed signed anything, cuz it's just all money. A resolution is all they need, just acknowledge.
Well, I didn't even do a resolution, but they acknowledged it, they didn't have to.
It's in the computer already because people are spinning that one?
That's true.
We have to.
Yeah. How are you today?
Good.
Good to see you again.
Yes.
I love you.
Hi, Robin, I might have come by last year when I came by. I'm new director of the Health Department.
Well, I think I've met, yes, but I don't know why, yeah.
Can we probably like?
What's your first name?
Maggie Jackson.
Maggie Johnson and-
Jackson.
Jackson.
Jackson did.
Ann Bowman was, and we were talking yesterday about-
Cindy, you called Dave for the fairground.
Applying for some job and she was kinda pushing her window whether, so I don't know whether, I didn't, that's all I-
Until late, we have to pay Maggie.
Yes, and I was ripped also in the first wave, so it was just a terrible year.
It was a bad year.
That's probably a deep enough question.
Yeah, I'm very thankful I got to rejoin the agency, so yeah, things are out for her too. Maybe we met at a community meeting, so I used to come here and-
Yes, maybe that's what it is.
Oh, okay, thank you, bye bye. He said he'd come down, I guess he wants to go back to his office, right?
I've got money for you. We've got about twenty-five hundred dollars.
What?
And no officers. We've got money for you from State.
So it's there.
So all that, all those that are around.
Creatures have happened.
Yes, so there's a whole renovation going on, that's exciting. It's a beautiful building too.
It's, it's a lot to go through, but it'll be worth it. I have it written down.
See, you can all miss them? That was, that was in Tembro, back before the first of the year.
Stephen?
So, I think they've doubled in Tembro.
Oh.
Cuz I was gonna go on last year's.
Maggie, this is like this, an assistant.
Stephen, yeah.
Hi, can you check on the board on thirteen oh nine on their capital?
Those utility bills have late fees?
I was thinking they had in Tembro two thousand seventeen on the line.
Are they late?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was, they late these.
I was always under the impression that we, we didn't. Or maybe it's interest.
We paid IRS and OTC late fees.
Yeah, okay, well, that's fine.
It's not late, you don't pay it, but it is late, yeah.
Damn. It's not a good thing, but it's a thing.
Okay.
It's a, you, you have a contract with the utility, for utility services, it's just part of the contract.
And this is different, she's saying that the in Tembro in seventeen eighteen was underground, underground electric?
I think that's what that is.
He said, he says that's what this is. Well, it's not necessarily what it says, but he's saying that's what it's for. Right, okay, so can I just change the fiscal year, I mean, did they, how much did they in Tembro in seventeen eighteen? Oh, okay, can you translate the Lacy's phone?
Well, that's the deal. My personal one, oh, last month, I didn't even get it until after fifteen.
Okay, can you, we'll just walk them out, can you bring it over? Okay, thank you, bye bye. Good, she's on her way over, cuz she had, she said she didn't know it was the same, cuz on the, what she had said, underground electrical.
Right.
On here, it just said wire and labor.
Yeah.
So she's bringing it over.
Well, I wouldn't have known, I hadn't been involved yet.
Alright, two items have closed, but there is one other that I have to do. So, thank you.
Yes.
Thursday, Monday, I had a doctor's appointment, he said, anytime, I bet if not by Monday, they'd have it in use.
By today? By today?
Yeah. So I did all the things I had to do, came, okay, so it was about seven o'clock. About eight, man, so much of the days that sit around the hospital. And I said, nothing's happened, let's go. Something kind of dethers on the couch and we got there at two. And I keep thinking, we're back there. It was all set and done, it was about nine o'clock, and I thought it was nine o'clock at night. I was just so lost in the environment. I guess, I guess I was. Hands and feet were kind of gray, they were getting those. Ronnie was late, she came, she was in the chappers. She was just kind of, yeah. She was kind of impersonal, because she didn't get the chapper.
Congratulations. Congratulations on the money.
Thank you. I knew something was wrong because it took about three pushes to get mine. I think it's like two days. And she was going, with your sister, it was a signal, it was really, it was really good. To myself, she's gonna, yeah, got those ribs. She's like, it's not, huh? She's gonna push it, and she was gonna fix it up.
Yeah.
She's stuck. She's like, I did it again. Yeah. She was just, I'm still good now, yes, yeah. She's, she's pretty good, she's pretty healthy, but she's about to be. For the scratches, the hair, the tummy, yes.
I guess that I debate, we actually need to acknowledge that we've got another indigenous person.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, I need to visit with Dog about that a little bit.
Oh, they're late, okay.
I mean, yeah, we haven't, but it's not that many.
Did we have a coffee in the bean?
Oh, my sand, apparently so. Coffee in the bean.
To have my glasses on. Especially when I drive things.
Hey, it's my hand is left, yeah. We never, we never guaranteed staying for you.
Because they bring the mix out.
Right?
At Alton?
Yeah.
They have the dipping powders in there.
Oh, they do?
No.
Did you do it yourself?
I haven't got the, I wish I could go. If I can get it, I'll just go there and get it.
Yeah.
They had them in pink, it was only a baby, it was kind of- You know, it's too cold.
Too cold, okay, yeah.
They were, they were wrestling it up to zero. Your Christmas is gonna be awesome.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Your Christmas is gonna be-
Oh, I know, I know. They need.
No.
You know, of course.
Before we, before we make a motion to approve purchase orders and travel claims, I would like to, to skip to item E. For the P card, I, I move that we skip to item E and approve or deny the P card payment for September eighteen, two thousand eighteen, payment of fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
I'll second that motion.
Ron moved, Hess seconded to skip to item E and approve or deny the September two thousand eighteen, payment of fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents. All those in favor?
Ron?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Motion carried, okay, what we have is a P card payment for emergency management for fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents and it was to of course it goes to Bank of America. This was for, um this was for food at Big Dan's at Woodward for Brandon Fetter's for the Northwest Emergency Managers Meeting held at Big Dan Steakhouse. My question would be, why would we do this and not the way we always do it, or we just reimburse?
Yeah, we should. I would think, I don't know that you can use that card for that.
For food? Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can, just not fuel.
But we've only used it for fuel once. And we approved that.
What kind of trip was this? Was this a day trip where he goes and comes back? Cuz if it is, that food is on him. If it's an overnight visit, you can reimburse.
Well, I'm sure that it was just a day trip out to the Northwest.
Then if it was a day trip, that's not a reimbursable expense.
Yeah, you don't count that in.
We have been though.
What's it say in our?
It's taxable, if it's taxable, yes, we do reimburse, even if it is a daytime trip.
What's it say in our policies and procedures manual, that's what I wanna know.
It says if you don't stay overnight, you don't pay.
No, it doesn't.
Do we have one here?
Yeah.
Is it a required meeting too?
It's, yeah, and it means required meeting and it was an all-day meeting, so it was at the-
Why are we fighting over this? I don't understand that. We've already misused the P card a few times.
Because it's through Bank of America.
Thank you.
And if it is-
And if it is, I mean, in my opinion, if it's in our policy that way, it needs to be changed because, you know, he's not able to go home and eat lunch or whatever. And I don't, to me, it shouldn't matter whether it's just a day trip or an overnight. If you're going on business, then you should be able to reimburse.
We've never done it that way because we, we have taxed it, however. We have taxed the money. And that's the difference, whether it's overnight or not.
You guys see traveling?
There's a travel policy. It's a separate, it's a separate policy.
It's not in there?
No, it's a travel policy.
Okay, and it's not in that book?
No. I mean, I, Kenny went to go get hers. It's a separate little policy. Is it not at the back? At the back?
No.
That's all sorts of metal? Nope. It's, it's a little skinny one. But it should be down.
Probably ought to be made part of the regular going in, but.
Yeah.
New task. Just gonna need one more thing. Doesn't get more.
Definitely have a separate policy and procedures that we use for the P card.
We do have a P card policy.
That's, we need that too.
We need to have one of the girls come in and offer at, or.
And then.
Hi, can you either look and see if you can see the P card, that big folder that I have, all the P card stuff in? I think it might be back there by the printer, if not, if you don't find it, come over and I'll.
Did you look at the rest of that?
I just need a copy of the P card.
Yeah, I, it's, I don't.
Okay, thank you. But the P card policy's not gonna say anything about eating overnight or anything like, I mean, whether it's a day trip or not, but.
Well, didn't we bill the procedures?
We used their standard one.
Oh, okay.
We did.
Where'd you, where'd you find that?
Just another phone or over.
Oh. I just sensed it was, willing to make that a good feller.
Okay, we also count the.
Okay, it says here, the county will pay only the customary three meals per day per individual. The county will reimburse or pay for meals up to twenty dollars per meal per individual. The individual be, will be responsible for costs in excess of this amount. Tips, not to exceed eighteen percent of the total bill. The county will not pay for snacks, drinks, not associated with a meal, or for alcohol. So it says nothing in there about whether it's a day trip or overnight, or.
Then, um, sounds like, uh, maybe you need to update your, 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 your policy.
So why, why, why is that?
So that it's in com, so that it's in compliance with IRS regulation.
That's not right. That's not right. It's taxable if they don't stay all night, but it's non-taxable if they do.
Yeah.
Garfield County has the same travel, travel handbook procedure. It's established by echo rulings.
Um, again, I don't know that that's in compliance with IRS regulations. So, I mean, I, I can, I can pull that stuff and research that stuff for you.
Please do, please do. Because, like, our guys, if they go to a class, normally they bring their lunch to, to work for.
Whether we can pay.
Well, I mean, it's always been my understanding that,
Get either more.
You can reimburse if it's overnight, if it's not overnight, you can't reimburse. So, um, but I, I, I will research that and I will get you an opinion.
What, what do you want us to do on this?
I think you have to pay it. I mean, he used the P card, uh, it looked like he was authorized to use the P card to the vendor he used the P card with. So I think you have to pay the P card bill. Um, and then if that's, uh, it doesn't appear to be in violation of the current travel policies, I think you just have to pay it.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, then I need to look at the IRS regulations and how they apply to county government. And, um, and get you guys an opinion, and then, once you get the opinion, then maybe we look at updating the travel policy.
Okay, that sounds like a.
Yeah, okay.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the fourteen dollars and seventy-three cent payment.
Second. Has moved, wrong, seconded to, uh, approve the fourteen dollar and seventy-four cent payment, uh, to Bank of America through the, through the P card. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, fifteen.
Ten and a fifteen, nineteen.
Yep.
Okay. With that being said, I move that we return to item D and approve payment of purchase orders and travel claims.
I'll second that motion.
Well, moved, has seconded to move back to item D and approve purch, purchase orders and travel claims. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay. If you want to ring Alex and let her know that.
Oh, she's just here. She gets ready.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh.
Hi, you just walked off, but P O's are ready. Okay, all right, thank you, bye. All right, thanks, bye.
Okay, item E, no, wait, item D, blanket purchase orders, we just had the one.
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve blanket purchase orders.
Let's see, we didn't, uh, move, we didn't approve.
Yeah, I moved that we.
It was in that last move, yeah, that last motion.
That we'll move up there and approve.
Got it, yeah. Okay.
So I, I move that we approve blanket purchase orders.
Second that.
Wrong, moved, has seconded to approve blanket purchase orders, all in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item F, holiday schedule for Grant County for calendar year two thousand nineteen.
Donna gets the prize this week, cause she caught the error.
Yeah, more, more travels with that calendar.
I had, and here's, here's the old one, so you can see what the movie was. I had November eleventh, November eleventh. So, here, and I did two copies. So here's a revised, and I had X side board on.
Ah.
Was it, so I hadn't sent it through the X R board, that's okay.
Cindy, the Manchester Fire Department needs a blanket for a thousand dollars for the, uh, Nacles store, Tina Anthony.
Okay, this is the revised holiday schedule for Grant County for, uh,
Um, here's a.
For calendar year two thousand nineteen.
Out.
And just let the minute show that the, that the change from two thousand eighteen, not only are the dates, but Columbus Day has been omitted and replaced with Thursday, December twenty-sixth. So, I would move that we, we approve the holiday schedule for calendar year two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Wrong, moved, has seconded to approve the, the holiday schedule for Grant County for calendar year two thousand nineteen. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Well, two thousand nineteen ain't on us yet, so no harm, no foul. Item G, designation of receiving officer, Jenna Killian for the Palm Creek Fire and Ambulance.
I should move.
Has moved, wrong, seconded, I second. Has moved, wrong, seconded to approve Jenna Killian from the County Clerk's Office to, uh, receiving officer for Palm Creek Fire and Ambulance. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Item H, indigent citizen, cremated remains of Terrence Sleeper from Stitzworth Funeral Home.
Um, the, uh, release, when I came back from lunch one day, Alex had accepted the cremated remains, but what we, I had, I was only aware of two cremated remains, and Terrence Sleeper was not one of the two. The two were Anthony Palmer and James Smith Junior. And, um, so I emailed, um, Mr. Stenzworth when I got back from lunch, and the girl told me there were three instead of two, which, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I just, the communication wasn't there, and my question is, um, what kind of due diligence do I need to do proving that they're do, that they're indigent people, or, you know, what, where do, I don't want to get the county in a bad position, but I need to know.
Well, and, and was he a Grant County resident or a pastor?
They were all from the nursing center, I believe, the nursing home, the sort of living center, but, you know, I don't really know that. He, you know, I'd be emailed, and then he kind of spatted back at me through email, and that's kind of where we were at.
You know, the nursing home facility is supposed to let the county know when someone passes. And I don't understand why we're hearing from this, from the funeral home after the fact. I, I don't understand that. Um, that's their responsibility. Um, what we need is just some sort of letter on, letterhead from the nursing home, saying, these kids, people.
Okay.
Were indigent.
Okay.
And, um, I think that's probably sufficient.
Okay. Well, I will work on getting that, I just didn't, I just kind of needed guidance on what to do on that.
Cause the nursing home will be, will know their affairs and know who's paying their bills, and so if they're on Medicaid or whatever, they'll be able to tell you that they're.
And, and these three, none of us, they didn't cost the county as far as, we didn't have to pay for the cremation, they're just, they don't have any word to anyone to, um,
Accept the.
Accept the remains, exactly, accept the remains. And so, um, do you all want me to wait a week or two and put that on the agenda, maybe in a couple of weeks, and where we're at on the monument thing, or?
Yeah, we need to, we need to be moving on that.
I'm kind of.
We're getting back, back up.
So, okay, oh, maybe in a couple of weeks, put it on the agenda?
Sure.
That's all I have.
Find out, Cindy, where we're at on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll send you all out an email kind of reminder, maybe next, or like, this week.
Yeah, please do, please do. Okay, so, no action on item H. Uh, item I, contingency authorization number two for Kyler Construction Group, uh, project number one six zero one three four.
And here is the latest of what they approved of that stuff, so.
Okay, I'm trying to, we might have to tell you that. Looks like they're trying to give us eighty-four hundred dollars back.
Back.
And then, and then take forty-seven thirty-six.
Yeah.
Right back their way. Four. Is that what this twenty, twenty-two that we're gonna?
We're not gonna, there's gonna be no action on twenty-two yet. They haven't got the quote on that yet, that's what Larry told me this morning.
Is there any way to, I, do you know what this is all about?
Uh, not exactly, yes, Larry was gonna come in anyway, so let me just get him. And if not, we'll get Jim Hamlin on, oh, that's Kyler's deal, that's.
Yeah, well, but Jim ought to know something about it.
Hi Larry, it's Cindy. Um, are, are you at a point where you'd come over? Okay, we'll see you in a minute, thank you. Bye-bye. He can, he said he's already in here with the window, I said, I'll be right here.
While we're waiting, I, just due to time, I would move that we skip to item K, uh, review the state expenditures for the District Attorney's Office for September two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Wrong, moved, has seconded to skip to item K, and review the state expenditures for the District Attorney's Office. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously.
I move that you sign.
Max moved, Max has moved to approve the amount claimed of three hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty cents. Wrong, seconded. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. Where do I sign, right here?
Uh, I think you signed a little.
I'm the claimant.
Yeah, and it says, that's where we've always signed, even though it has that whole clause at the top.
Nice and toasty in here, I'll stay here for a while.
Yeah, I should have, shouldn't I?
Okay, uh, item L, state payroll claim voucher for Election Board Secretary for September two thousand eighteen. Looks like we have two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents for the salary. I move to approve the voucher for September two thousand eighteen.
I'll second that.
Wrong, moved. Has seconded to approve the state payroll claim voucher for Election Board Secretary for September two thousand eighteen. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously. We can load crop in for this. We have none.
Does this blanket need to go through this wheel?
She had, in fact, when her head came out, the murk reached down.
Well, we've already approved to, moved to approve.
Blanket.
Blanket, so we decided.
Seven pounds, seven ounces. Twenty and a half inches.
I move to return to item I. For the allowance authorization number two for Kyler Construction Group, project number one six zero one three four.
I'll second that motion.
Wrong, moved, has seconded to move back to item I for the allowance authorization number two for Kyler Construction Group, project one six zero one three four. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Hi Larry.
Good, good morning.
What do you know?
Um, he's gonna have to help you with the P R.
Can you look at this real quick?
Yeah.
They won't even know what exactly this is first. It's, oh, that's, it's just kind of going over, I think, what.
It's contingency, correct?
Yes, so.
But are you putting eighty-four hundred back in, and then forty-seven hundred back out? Is that what you're doing?
Forty-seven hundred, help me out here.
Oh, oh.
Well, I don't know what this is. I don't know, I don't know what this is.
Well, that's what, okay, cause that's dated nine twenty-one.
I don't know where that number's coming from.
Do we need to get Ryan on the phone?
Oh, for sure.
Oh, for sure.
For sure. Huh, yeah, the eighty-four hundred was all the window returns that were in, called out phase one, I, that's gonna be very disruptive. So we decided, phase two, we're gonna be tearing the walls out, you guys more likely won't be occupying the building in some form or fashion, we decided it'd make sense to do it in phase two. So that's what the eighty-four hundred return is. Oh, what do you need, office?
Yeah.
Uh, five eight oh, seven six seven. One zero, nine five. Hang on just a moment.
The boss is...
They're just trying to get something done. Hey, Steve-O, hold up on that grill for just a minute, will you?
What did he say, seven six seven, what?
One zero ninety-five.
Ten ninety-five.
Yeah.
Ashley, good morning, it's Larry. Hey, I need to speak to Ryan, if, if he's not in his meeting. If he is, we're gonna pull him out. I, I don't know, I'm trying to total some things up, and I'll see where that's, why, where that number comes from.
Oh, is that for the, uh, pre-approved electrical for first, second, and third floor?
Where's your, where's your email from Jim Hamlin?
Hi.
Ryan, it's Larry in the commissioner's meeting.
That's what it is.
Hang on just a moment.
We're just trying to figure out, figure, but I think it is...
Is it this?
It's gonna be the, the four thousand seven thirty-six on the allowance, allowance expenditure prior to this authorization. Is that going to be the second floor electrical and PR twenty for one thousand three forty-one?
What, what is the four thousand dollars that you're talking about?
Four thousand seven thirty-six on that authorization, that allowance contingency authorization, number two, in that middle section. There's, in red, it's got four thousand seven thirty-six.
Is this what Jim just sent?
Yeah, well, he gave me at the meeting the other day. His letter, I mean, his email? Yeah, uh, and I see, the not to exceed was three thousand three sixteen. Right. So, is that, it's, 'cause the, what we're trying to figure out is what's the allowed expenditures prior to this approval? Is that the remaining of what's not been used on the pre-approved electrical not to exceed?
That is a good question. Yeah, no, Paul's been keeping track of, of all the fixtures up to this point, um, and I know we had a bit of a, uh, bust. It wasn't a huge amount, but there was a couple of figures that, I mean, white and red, but I believe he updated that. So, um, the question you were asking, because I don't see related to the four thousand seven that you're talking about.
Yeah, well, we'll just do some checking, if it's okay with you, we'll run it through next Monday. Now, we'll go ahead and get the, uh, PR for, uh, number twenty
Twenty.
done today, we've got it as a separate line item, so...
All right.
Oh, oh, if you'll check on that with Paul, and just let me know, and then we'll just run this back through the board next week, if that's okay with you gentlemen.
Okay, so we'll, we'll delay the PR until next week?
No, no. We're just gonna, uh, uh, delay the allowance contingency authorization form, that, that form that Jim had brought over. It's a Tyler Construction form.
Does he have a list on the work PR, is that, is that covered?
Yes, it's like, uh, seven three, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. There's no thirteen, there's fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen. And then additional cost for electrical wiring on third floor.
Okay, so he wrapped the third floor, okay, I guess I didn't see that, that particular piece of paper.
Oh, okay. How about I scan, how about I scan it to you after the meeting?
I was supposed to make him make sure he gets this, so he, maybe he can make sense of it.
Yeah, and Paul's the one who signed off on it, so I'm, I'll send you a copy of it whenever we get out of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Talk to you later, Ryan, bye-bye.
Uh-huh, bye.
Should that be on the agenda, which one we're talking about?
Well, that's, that's what this is, I, this is...
No, I mean, the amounts and stuff, the PR, and what the amounts were for the contingencies. It has been in the past.
It has, but, I mean, we haven't always done it on all of them, though, as, not on this. We haven't done them on all projects that way, they're all kind of done a little differently. But, to me, it, the amount, I just am putting that up, 'cause it helps me whenever I have to do my minutes.
Sounds like it would help all around.
Yeah, I just didn't have that amount whenever I did the agenda at the time, he didn't get it to me till, and yeah, at twelve fifty-seven on Friday. That's what I, I got it at twelve fifty-seven on Friday.
I was talking to Ryan on the way in this morning, I told him, that's why I checked with you, Mister, that, that late on Friday, I didn't know if it...
But the one that we need to fix.
Yeah, so, on item, on item, uh, I, we will just, no action. Uh, item J, courthouse and sheriff's office ring renovations, and architects. PR twenty is the water leaks at the south, south and north entrances of the courthouse.
We, we discussed that a couple of meetings ago.
Right.
That you've had a leak at the south entrance, uh, looks like for quite some time.
Yeah.
We were waiting to see what windows repaired would fix, how much, that, how far that would go. Uh, the north leak has slowed down considerably, but we still have a top leak. So, that PR is to cover a rubber coating on the stone on the south side. That's the recommendation from the roofer. Uh, we have mortar joints that are failing, and we can caulk them, but they're just gonna continue to fail. Uh, it'll, it'll be a color match pretty close to the stone itself.
So, we really want that to see?
No, that was my biggest concern. And, uh, with the EPDM, a rubber material, you can only get it in black or white, it just wasn't gonna work out. So, I did talk to them, they can do a rubber coating. That, I'm confident that'll fix that. On the north side, uh, we've got, there's the stone gables and comes down. Where it stops, there's these little pockets, and that looks like water's holding there. So, what we're going to do, that, we're gonna do some joint repair there, and then we're going to take some, uh, joint sealant and build those up, or cricket them up a little bit. You won't see any of this. If you do, it'll, it'll match, the, the sealant will match the stone. But, uh, I'm confident that that'll fix what little leak we have there now. That's what those are.
Okay, and at the time, you didn't know what it would be, so you didn't know what you're...
Exactly, exactly, and that's actually better than I thought it would be, that's really... The roofer will, our roofing contractor will take care of the south side, the rubber coating. We will take care of the...
The north side?
The north side, yes.
All right. Well, it looks like you got some good weather to...
Yes, yes, uh, yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, then on, uh, PR twenty-two for the first floor, HVAC revisions.
No action on that one.
We just got the price back, I know, the end of last week, so I don't even think the, the architectural firm has got a chance to get it done.
Okay.
Sign it, so that will hopefully make the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, all right, so... I move that we, uh, we approve PR twenty for roof repairs over the south and north side entrances of the courthouse.
I'll second that.
Wrong move, Hess seconded to approve PR twenty in the amount of thirteen hundred and forty-one dollars, uh, to take care of the water leaks on both south and north entrances of the courthouse. All those in favor?
Wrong.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Do you have anything to add, Larry, on, on this HVAC?
Yeah, I can give you a little heads up or rundown. Floor, the third floor and the second floor, on the original, uh, contract, called for total replacement, all ductwork, water lines. For floor one, it was just as needed. They really weren't counting on having to replace much, you know, on the first floor. We got into it, and that's not the case, it's just not the case. We actually had the mechanical engineer for the project make a visit, come up. He got with our contractor, HVAC contractor, and in the end, it looks like we've, we've gotta do what we're doing on the second, third floor. Pretty much replace all the ductwork. That's gonna add about three, three and a half weeks right now to the schedule, which, let me back up a minute. They're about to wrap up on the second floor. We have ceiling, uh, grid and tile installed on the third floor. Third floor is that close from being wrapped up. The second floor, I know the geothermal crew's coming in hopefully this week, and, uh, second floor's about eighty percent done. So, we're starting to look at the first floor, so we can get out ahead of it. So, anyway, but it is gonna add some time to the project and cost. I don't know the number yet, I know it came in last week, but that's what we're looking at. That's what PR twenty-two is, 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 we're gonna pretty much have to handle it the way we did the second and third.
Well, that leaves us a heads up.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, I'm sorry, I'll update you, the, as I said before, the roof, all the roof work is done, it's great. The courthouse windows are done, except for the operables, we have four operable windows, they have those, they hope to install them, get them all installed this week. Uh, then they'll go back to the jail, jail's about fifty percent done, complete. Uh, exterior work, concrete work, I'm done, except for a little bit of sidewalk. We are going to do some dirt work this week and finish, any, any dirt that you see out there will be sawed at the end of the week. We've gotta get sawed down while we can. Um, I have some door replacement to do. We're getting real close, we're getting real close, but it looks like we're gonna, with the HVAC additional work, it's probably gonna have to be done. We're looking at second week in November, probably till we're done. So, but, but the disruptions, I think, are, are coming down, so, and everybody seems to be happy with everything, so that's, that's good. And if, if they're not, let me know.
Oh, you know me, you're on speed dive.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Larry.
Yes, all right.
Note to Larry, nothing in the election board office the second week of November.
Good, yes, yes. Matter of fact, that's a, no, no, actually, that's a good point. We probably need to jump on yours first and get, get that out of the way, that's a good point, yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you, and we'll see you.
All right, thanks, Larry.
Mm-hmm.
Give me a second, Larry. You've got a week.
Item A, new business, Cindy, you knew, I mean, new business, right, new business. I have none as well. Item nine, commissioner's comments, Maximus.
Well, we had anywhere from six to eight inches of rain in our area. We had some roads washed out, and some culverts washed out. And, uh, we're working on that, we're gonna take pictures and record all that. Uh, give us a little time to get everything repaired, back up and running order, so, outside of that, we're doing pretty good. Uh, they come up, we had a meeting with the asphalt people I told you about last week. Haven't heard anything back from Venture on what's gonna happen on my road out there. But hopefully, they'll, they'll, uh, come around and fog seal it for me. I don't know what, what for sure will happen, anyway, uh... I've had a little Bill Palsy episode, so I'm not speaking right. You can tell by the left side of my face, you know?
Notice.
My eyelid.
But I didn't know where it was.
But, I'm going back to the doctor Saturday, and again, I've been to the doctor a couple of times this week, so, we'll go from there.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, uh, we as well had the cup runneth over, as far as rain went. We were lucky, there was only, as far as I know, there was only one family that was stranded. Uh, we had to wait till the water, for the water to go down before we could fix the part of the road that got tore out, and, uh, we were on that, and they were able to get out within just a few hours. So, I really appreciate the, the guys working hard to, to get that done, uh, this past week. I'd like to echo what Max said, please be patient with us. It's gonna take us all winter to, to get things back to where they were. It is, as water goes down, you start finding more and more things that are, that are wrong. Um, not to say that we weren't blessed by how much worse it could have been. But, uh, that's, as far as that goes, we're, we're, we've got five graders running today. Hopefully, all week, we'll have trucks hauling shale, you know, trying to get all these culverts that got washed out, roads that got washed out, uh, bridge approaches, et cetera, uh, getting that done. Tomorrow, I have a CDSA board meeting, tomorrow at nine, in Enid, at the nonprofit center. I won't be able to make the, uh, CED meeting on Wednesday, however, at two o'clock after the, the CED meeting, I'm meeting Donnie Head and Melissa, uh, what, uh, what's her last name?
What is her last name? You had to ask, didn't you? You knew her, you know her.
Yeah, uh, yeah, our new ODOT representative for, for, uh, counties. Uh, meeting her at the, uh, Wild Horse Creek Bridge, Truss Bridge, southeast of Palm Creek, uh, two o'clock on Wednesday.
And you remember that Wednesday?
Yes.
I have a CTAO meeting in Oklahoma City.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna plan on...
Okay. Well, it may be old hat, you know, other counties have done this, so...
So...
I just thought I'd...
Yeah.
Do what they have to say.
Yes.
I mean, so back over, we're having Alex's thirtieth birthday party, so we're not allowed to leave the courthouse. It's a thirty, thirty, we call it thirty.
Well, uh, anyway, like I said, I won't be there, I'm certain Max is the, uh, peer member for that, I'm sure he'll be there.
Yeah.
And I don't know if Cindy will or not, but, uh, that's about all I have. I, I will say that I won't be going to the ACO conference the last week in October. Uh, Cindy Pratt is going to take my, take my spot there, so...
Cindy Byrd won't be over there Wednesday, uh, she called, said that she was not gonna be able to make it.
Oh, okay.
That Cindy's representative for her office.
Probably Cheryl Wilson, I would imagine.
I don't know, she didn't say.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, that's all my comments, which leads us to item ten.
At least, I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion. Hess moved, wrong seconded to adjourn at ten oh six. All those in favor?
I don't know.
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried unanimously, we are adjourned. Is this your opinion?